Meeting to order at approximately 6:30 PM. Commissioners, you received the April 3 meeting minutes. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second for the approval of the amendments they are. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Under all business, we have this variance and special exception application for 1728 North Second Street, which is Zone RM, is filed by the Gedenzia Foundation, Inc., to expand the existing supportive housing family used from eight to 12 individuals and to request relief from the associate off-street parking requirements and/or request approval for the required off-street parking to be located further than permitted by the zoning code.
Yes, so this was initially brought up at last month's meeting. At the time, we recommended a continuance, which the applicant concurred with and submitted to the zoning hearing board to just discuss, further discuss the issues at hand. So the re, and in that discussion, it was determined that the applicant could do a concurrent variance in case, in the event that the zoning hearing board did not want to grant approval of the special exception for relief from the off-street parking requirements, because the applicant does own other properties in the neighborhood at which they could provide the parking. So the variance would be for providing parking outside of the 500 feet that's permitted in the zoning code. And so that's what the change in the application was. It was just a special exception last month. Now it's a variance and a special exception for the, for both of those requests. They are concurrent, so if the zoning hearing board approves the special exception, the variance will be unnecessary. And we're hoping that that's the step that they decide to take on that. So I just wanted to provide an update as to what had changed from the last month for, for the planning commissioners' benefits and the public's benefit. With that being said, the property at 1728 North Second Street is a .13 acre lot featuring a three-story 6,369 square foot structure, which was constructed circa 1900. Property is bounded by Kelker Street to the north, North Second Street to the east, the property at 1726 North Second Street to the south, and the property at 1721 North Front Street to the west. This detached structure features elements of a vernacular architectural style. Character-defining features include stucco facade, the stacked block massing, the large wraparound porch on the front and side elevations with a portion on the side having been enclosed, the prominent pediments over windows, the steep gable roofs with ice stops, the prominent chimney, and the attached garage, which has been converted to living space. And that's actually part of the office component of their facility. The main entrance features a wide wooden door with a full view divided light pane topped with a divided light transom featuring frosted glass. It is accessed by a large concrete porch with two sets of concrete stairs accessible from Second Street and Kelker Street. There appear to be three other entrances on the Kelker Street elevation, a half-view divided light wooden panel door accessed by a small concrete porch and steps with metal railings, an access point recessed into the building, which is not visible from the public right-of-way, and a half-view divided light metal panel door providing access to the converted garage at the rear of the property. Infiltration also includes windows in a variety of sizes, shapes, and configurations. Many of the windows are double-hung with divided light top sashes over single pane sashes. Some of the windows, such as the bay window on the side elevation, feature fully divided light windows, and there are other differentiations, such as arched windows or stained glass windows as well. The gable roof of the structure and the dormer bay window roofs appear to be topped with asphalt shingles, but the front porch features a metal roof and the converted garage features a flat rubber roof. The building is an eclectic patchwork of styles and designs, and it is somewhat difficult to identify the timeframe of alterations and thus determine whether they have achieved historic value in their own right. Although this design and style differ from most of the surrounding architecture, the building does reflect the diverse nature of properties on its block and thus contributes somewhat to the character of the streetscape and neighborhood. The Planning Bureau staff recommends that the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has submitted two alternatives for providing relief for the requested expansion of the existing supportive housing family use, a proposal which would otherwise be permitted by right. Both requests are reasonable, given that residents are not permitted to have vehicles, which will reduce the potential impact from the expansion of the facility's occupancy, and that the alternative site for the provision of any required off-street parking is located just outside of the allowable 500-foot buffer. In discussions with neighbors, they have indicated that the applicant's facility has been a benefit to the neighborhood and that they appreciate the informal surveillance provided by the residents on-site. An expansion in the number of residents should increase the positive impact of the existing facility.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name and your address and your relationship to the project?
My name's Dave Slinger. My, my home address or my Gedenzia office address?
Either, either or both.
My office, Gedenzia Incorporated, 106 West Main Street in Orange Town, Pennsylvania.
Good.
I'm Sean Delaney. I'm at 17 North Second Street.
And your, your relationship to the project?
I am the attorney.
The attorney. You both heard the staff report. Did you want to add anything to the report?
Really, we can answer, I mean, the report was very fulsome. Very well done. Beginning on the end. We can answer any questions about Gedenzia, about surrounding house itself. The nature of this request really is just relief from the parking requirements. The zoning hearing board has the ability to, to grant a special exception approval to reduce or make parking. There, under the current zoning, there, there is a parking requirement, which is based on the number of units, units that might, the older ones look at the number of residents and stuff. So we have nine bedrooms. We would need nine off-street parking spaces. We have two, two and a half parking spaces that are on site. We have two, three staff, so rotated throughout the night hours day. But our residents are not allowed to have them, as Mr. Knight said. So for actual parking impact, our residents don't have them, as I know. So that's really the nature of the project.
But you do have staff, so I'm sure they drive, so I'm sure there's.
Yeah, every time I've gone to the site, the two parking spaces.
Commissioners, I have no questions at this time. If you have any concerns or questions, I'll start with Commissioner O'Toole.
No, appears that the, the parking issue has been adequately addressed, so I have no questions.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yeah, I, based on the explanation provided around the, the parking relief and given who is at the house, they may, they can't have cars. So I would, would think that the relief would be granted.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Joe.
No questions.
That is good. Is there anyone from the public for or against this project? I don't see anyone for or against. Commissioners, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second for the approval of the project. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is under new business. This is a special exception application for 300 Hill Street, Hill Avenue. It's a zone residential low density filed by Reginald Covington with, from the Heart Church Ministries of Parisburg. This to establish a place of worship use on-site.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to establish a new place of worship use on-site. The proposed use requires zoning hearing board approval of a special exception per Section 7-305.7 of the zoning code. Property at 300 Hale Avenue is a 1.39 acre lot featuring a two-story 14,926 square foot building, which was constructed in 1956. Property is bounded by Rudy Road to the north, Hale Avenue to the east, Swetara Street to the south, and the properties at 2415 Rudy Road and 2412 and 2416 Swetara Street, as well as an unimproved prop, unimproved right-of-way to the west. This detached structure features elements of a nondescript architectural style. Character-defying features include the beige rough-faced block facade, the narrow vertical windows along the front and side facades, two-story porch at the rear of the main building, the colored band around the top of the original structure, and the signage indicating the former occupant of the building, the Girl Scouts in the Heart of Pennsylvania. There are several entrances around the perimeter of the building. The main entrance on the northern elevation features full view metal doors topped with two plate glass transoms. It is sheltered by a small awning. Additional entrances to the rear of the building appear to be primarily solid metal doors. Infiltration also features windows in a variety of sizes and configurations. The front elevation features narrow vertical divided light windows. Windows on the rear of the building are primarily divided light with plate glass windows atop hopper windows. Windows to the rear of the building, of the main building, appear to be metal divided light windows on the first and second floors. Property features a six-foot-high fence with three vehicular gates set back from the property line, enclosing the building, two accessory parking lots, and landscaping on-site. Structure appears to be topped with flat rubber and metal roofs. The siting, massing, and design of the structure differ significantly from the surrounding neighborhood, which is primarily denser blocks of residential row homes, and thus the building does not contribute to the architectural character of the neighborhood. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant should consider installing a pedestrian walkway and separate gate so that parishioners and other visitors can access the building separately from the vehicular entrances. The applicant should install the proposed bicycle parking near the main entrance, and if possible, ensure that it is sheltered. And finally, the Planning Bureau recommends that the applicant install landscape screening along the exterior boundaries of the parking lots on-site to bring the property into conformance with the current zoning regulations and to prevent headlights spill over onto adjacent residential properties. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The proposed use will be similar in intensity and types of activities to the use that was previously on-site and which, to the Planning Bureau's knowledge, created no adverse impact for the surrounding neighborhood. And the project advances the purpose of the RL zoning district provided in Chapter 7-305.4B of the code as it establishes a low-intensity use that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and advances the community development objectives outlined in Chapter 7-301.27 of the zoning code.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Yes, my name is Reverend. I live at 2012 Abbey.
I live at twenty-three twelve Abbey Lane, Parisburg, Pennsylvania, and I'm a pastor.
Okay, you did hear the staff report. Are you acceptable of the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to add anything to the report?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Knight's feedback. We are working with a construction firm that's conducting a feasibility study. That's probably going to highlight some of the things that you mentioned as far as things that we need to add to the compliance with the. I'm in agreement. We're going to make sure, add everything that we need to the building to make it compatible.
Notice you did take care of the, like, parking. I believe this building was like the Girl Scout headquarters before. So I know they had traffic here then, but. And you also had agreement with somebody in the report you said you had, in case you needed.
Yes, sir, there's a Marshall Science Academy across the street. So if you know anything about church, for Mother's Day, Christmas, there's some services where we tend to have larger groups. And so in the event that the parking at the facility can't accommodate, we have an agreement with the, the, uh, Char- uh, Science Academy to use their parking as spillover parking. I doubt that's going to happen. Our church right now, we probably average around a hundred and ten attendees. We average anywhere from forty to fifty parking spots. And with the forty-two to forty-three on-site, uh, spaces and the street parking, I don't anticipate needing that spillover parking, but nevertheless, we wanted to establish an agreement so that we have permission.
That's very good. Because I'm sure in the future, you'll probably get many more people participating. With that, I do not have any other questions. It's almost straightforward, but I'll ask the commissioners if they have any concerns or questions. Commissioner O'Toole?
Yes, Reverend, you currently own the building or are you just leasing it?
No, we, we, uh, we are in another building that's about eight to nine minutes away from the current, uh, from the building that we intend to purchase.
Okay, so you're in, you're in the process of purchasing this?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you say a hundred and ten attendees, is that, is that a hundred and ten parishioners? Or on average, you get a hundred and ten per, per service?
We get a hundred and ten per service. We have, we live stream our services. So pre-pandemic, we were probably averaging around a hundred and sixty-five.
Okay.
During the pandemic, we brought the live stream. So a lot of our members now, they love to live stream, so they, they're watching.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive in this day and age. Yeah, no, no questions.
Commissioner Merrick?
No, I, I don't have any questions or comments. I think this is a straightforward change of views.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions, thank you.
Joe?
No concerns or anything like that, just, and it sounds, I think I saw in here that most of your parishioners drive, and maybe that'll continue to be the case if this is about ten minutes from where they are now. But, um, as part of that study, I do think it would be a great idea to get like a walkway in there as well, so they're not, you know, sharing space with the cars as they come in. I know that was part of it, and it sounds like it, that can be rolled into that, that would be a, a good, good idea. But I, no, no concerns as it is, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public for against this project? That's not. Commissioners, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve of the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval with the conditions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Good luck. You're one of, it sounds like you're one of more successful churches because I know even my church, they, they're on the Zoom, and they didn't come back. It's pretty empty on Sunday morning at the church, so.
No, we're, we're a good church. I'm glad to be the pastor. Very good church. My wife and I moved here from Maryland. Our home church is in Maryland. I was assigned here about five years ago.
Okay, great, good luck. Commissioners, Jeff, you have any other business?
Uh, no, nothing right now. Nothing for the commission, nope. Oh, sorry.
I just, I just wanted to introduce you. This is, this is Tiersa Cameron, who's now the deputy city solicitor, and she will be doing both this and zoning, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome to the world.
Look forward to working with you guys and helping, letting you guys teach me the code and everything like that. So right now, I'm kind of out of it. Sat in with some meetings with Jack and he's walking me through, so I'm looking forward to working with him.
Welcome, Bill.
And nice short meeting, that's great.
They're always like this, yes.
I've been to city council too, eleven, eleven thirty something.
I have a lot on there. You haven't seen some of their, in other years.
I probably.
You come at the right time. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry I missed, I usually do, I usually ask, who's that? But I'm glad Ann brought, brought up my back there, so, yeah, welcome, welcome. Commissioners, anything for the good of the water? If not, can I get a motion for, uh, adjournment?
Do it.
Second?
Second.
Stand your ground.